Good evening, folks, and welcome to the council meeting for tonight. Got a good crowd in the house. There might be somebody getting crucified tonight. Am I late? Usually they show in groups. All right. You know, I'm gonna ask my buddy Don Reepie to come forward and not only bless this town, but bless this council meeting. Thank you, buddy. You surprised?
No.
Not at all. Will you bow with me? Father, we are really thankful for this time of the year where we celebrate the resurrection of Jesus Christ that gives us hope for eternal salvation. And we want to thank you for this season. We want to thank you, Father, for this town that we live in and that we are a Christian community that believes in our Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to serve one another and to care for one another and to help this town to become all that it can be. I thank you for this council tonight, and I thank you for each one of them and their wisdom and their trust, and where they get that is from you. And we just ask your blessing upon their decision-making tonight. Be with this meeting, Father, that your will be done. Be with this town, Father, and we ask you your continual blessing upon it. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please pledge allegiance to this great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, we're going to call the council meeting. Guthrie Public Works to order. We're gonna do announcements and recognition, so you want to start with? Okay. Jim Olgrin, do we want to bring Jim up first?
I think I'll take the place of Jim for this one. He's very busy.
Well, your mustache is not as good as it is.
It is not as good as it is. It's not as visible.
This document here says that I'm gonna state my name and address. I'll state my name. It's Serena Breland, city manager. The city of Guthrie fully supports and encourages our employees to find a higher education, to better themselves, and in return, it betters our community. We have two individuals that have completed great milestones within their educational career. Today, I would like to talk about a young lady that works at our library. She's been there about 10 years. She started as a teen reading individual, as a volunteer at our library. She was born and raised in Guthrie, and her handsome husband Cody is here today as well, and they have two puppies that they call children. Recently, this individual received a Bachelor of Arts from the University of Central Oklahoma, and if you will join me in encouraging Samantha Stewart to come up and accept an award. So we have this to present, Mayor, to her, and a certificate.
How cool is that? And down here, it says, "From Mayor Chuck Burton."
And so if you'll stand with us for a moment, I believe Chris on his very high-tech phone will take a picture.
Wait, wait, wait for the reporter.
They're everywhere, they're everywhere.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Additionally, a newcomer to this city that's been with us almost a year and serves as the airport manager and has done absolutely amazing things at our airport. He recently received his Master's of Science from Southeastern Oklahoma State University, and the name of his degree is about six different words and something with aeronautical, and it sounds really fantastic, but I don't have that string of words in front of me. I apologize. Justin is a member of our team, always willing to serve. He even brought Santa in on an airplane at Christmas, so he's done some pretty remarkable things. Justin Hyde, please, please join me as we welcome him.
I expect us in staff meetings.
You wanna try one more time? You always walk away like it's perfect.
Thank you.
Why am I sitting down? I got one more to introduce. Betsy. As soon as I can separate these two little pieces of paper. Betsy Randolph, Arbor Day.
Hi, thank you for having me. I wanted to come and present to you, this is something that was presented to the city, and this is a commendation from the state of Oklahoma. This is from our Senator A.J. Griffin, District 20, and if I may, I'll read it. "State of Oklahoma Commendation, City of Guthrie: Whereas City of Guthrie has made an extraordinary contribution to their beautification, and whereas the National Arbor Day Foundation and the Oklahoma Department of Agriculture, Food and Forestry recognizes the city of Guthrie as a Tree City USA, and whereas it is fitting and proper that the Oklahoma State Senate, acting on behalf of the citizens of the great state of Oklahoma, hereby recognize the city of Guthrie as a Tree City USA. Now therefore, pursuant to the motion of Senator A.J. Griffin, the Oklahoma Legislature extends to the city of Guthrie best wishes and directs that this commendation be presented." And again, from Senator A.J. Griffin.
All right. Betsy, how long have we been a Tree City? I mean, that's not a new deal for us.
No, sir, we've been 16 years.
16 years, isn't that incredible? And you see the difference in our community.
Absolutely.
Well, and I'd like to take a minute just to thank you, Randolph, for all that you do for the community. We really do appreciate you.
Well, I'm honored to serve and grateful, and, you know, serve at the pleasure of the city council and the mayor and the city manager, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve, so thank you.
You're a great role model for children.
Thank you. I'll try to continue to be. That's a lot of pressure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Man, it just feels good tonight.
Guthrie Public Works, we have three items. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd make a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please.
Chairman, all the votes are in.
Yes, ma'am, show us how we felt. Motion passes unanimously. Sherry, does anybody have any information on Sherry? Is she under the weather? Well, it sounds like we need to keep her in our thoughts. All right. So I'm adjourning the Guthrie Public Works and calling to order the Guthrie City Council. Vice Mayor, I give you the consent agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve at this time items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please.
Hey, all the votes are in.
Yes, ma'am, show us how we felt. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Item three, city manager.
This item is to consider approval of declaring Total Investment Company in breach of its airport construction contract, AIP Project 3400036012-20012, and authorizing the city attorney to pursue all legal remedies, including action against a performance bond company. I'm gonna invite Justin Hyde to talk to us about the airport board's recommendation and in turn receive some information from our engineer on this project. Justin.
Again, I'm Justin Hyde with Guthrie, Emma Regional Airport. I'm the airport manager. I'm here on behalf of our airport board, who submitted a recommendation in turn from our airport engineers' recommendation. I'd like to invite up Curtis Brown, just to be able to share some insight on the recommendation concerning this matter.
Thank you. Again, I am Curtis Brown with Garver Engineers. I serve as the airport consultant out there. We currently have a project going on at the airport for reconstruction of several taxi lanes and extension of some, it's about a $1.3 million project. Letter to the airport board and to the city council is just notifying the airport board and city that in terms with the contract and the contract documents, we needed to notify you of the potential default to the contractor, that there are some performance issues there and open up this dialogue. We had actually started dialogue with the contractor back in November, dealing with some schedule slippage, again in January, and routinely through progress meetings. And early February, actually February 4th, we had a, Serena was there, and we had a very detailed meeting setting forth a performance plan for the contractor to meet certain milestones in order to avoid this procedure, and those milestones have not been met, and so we laid forth a letter. I think all you guys had the letter. The main items of concern that we have are, there's a number of small ones, but the major ones are just the slippage of the schedule, the inability with the resources that are on the project site to make up time and perform the contract within the contract time, and then also just some responsiveness nature of some of the items. Just a brief history of kind of where we are. Back shortly before Christmas, we were 60 days into the contract, and about 15% of the contract dollar value had been executed, 24% of the time had been burned right there around Christmas time. And when we had our performance meeting in early February, we were 43% of the way through the contract time, but we'd only made up 3% more in pay item work to be done. We're only 17% of the way through the pay items on this contract. And then as of today, from our books, and we have not processed a final payout for March yet, but just what we had on our books, we're looking at 26% of the way through the contract, and we are 61% of the way through the contract time. The trend line was very alarming to us because the difference between dollar value and time went from roughly 9% to 25% to 35%, and we're continuing to see slippage. And even more alarming to us is that the majority of work performed to date, really about half of it, maybe not majority, but half, has been performed by subcontractors, both electrical and utility contractors, and the remaining portion of the work will be performed by the prime contractor and his resources. At the time that the contract was awarded, there's a schedule of equipment and resources and manpower that's presented. That was part of our recommendation, and we have a crew of, a minimal crew, about five or six people routinely on-site, and there is equipment on-site adequate to perform the work, but basically just one crew. And given the slippage and schedule that we are really looking at two to three months behind schedule right now, and with a completion date scheduled for the end of June, with just one crew and available resources, we do not see, nor have we received, a realistic schedule laying it out where we can perform the contract within the contract time and those obligations which the contractor is beholden to. And that is actually one of the main causes for default is just reading, is fails to perform work or sufficient workers, equipment, or materials to assure completion of work in accordance with the terms of the contract. And if he cannot do that and put performance plans and meet those measures, then he's declared in default through the contract. There's some responsiveness issues and maintenance items, but those are just normal things that we can work through, but just wanted to inform the airport board and city council that we are looking like we are three, maybe longer, months past going to be in liquidated damages at the current rate of completion, and that by the terms, we needed to notify you that he could be declared in default. All because he can be declared in default doesn't mean you have to, but it is our obligation to inform you of that finding and that determination. And I'd like to open it up to any questions. I'll try not to get too bogged down in the engineering details, but if I need to clarify any of those points, I'll be more than glad to.
Who's the owner of Performance Bond Company?
It is, give me just a moment, please. The holder of the bond is... is Lexon Insurance Company, and they are out of Woodridge, Illinois, is the holder of this Performance Bond. And this is for Total Investments Company, who is a local contractor, actually. And this is, just on that note, this is not something that Garver or myself really enters into very lightly, and this has not been a frivolous action. Like, so we have spent several months, and week after week, trying to lay this out and express our concerns about schedule, and I just wanted to notify everyone of where we're at.
So currently, to date, we're at $84,000 liquidated damages, or is that what you're calculating?
Yes, yeah, that's very close to where we're looking at. If I had to, that is assuming, we're using the contractor's latest construction schedule and using those durations for activities and lining them up from where we are today, and that's where we're at.
The end of the project, you're saying will be...
Yeah, the end of the project would be 84 is what our projection is. That's Garver's projection, and that has numerous assumptions to it.
Yeah, I understand.
So I got a question. So if we declare this company in breach, I assume we'll open it up to bid to finish the project by a different company?
Randall, and you can correct me on this if you wish, but what would happen is the surety company would get engaged, and there's a negotiation period upfront. Should total investments be determined unable to, normally the surety company works with the existing contractor, try to put a plan in effect to finish the contract. Should they not be able to, the surety company would then take the current project and rebid that, the surety would rebid it, and determine a new contractor, and then assign that contractor back to the city of Guthrie, usually with a check for a difference of whatever the original bid was and what the new bid is. So you would be made up the difference, and then the project would complete. Normally, that rebid and negotiation will delay the project for maybe even five months, so it is, you're still going to, whatever course, there's still going to be a delay in the completion of this project. The surety is not a quick nor timely, necessarily painless procedure to go through. Randall, is there any...
Everything you said is definite.
Thank you.
And it is not famous.
How's this affecting the operation of the runway right now?
Currently, all of the construction is in area of the airport where it has minimal impact. There are five tenants where construction is directly adjacent to their taxi lane. There's still payments, so they can get out, but it is a little bit of a safety issue. With minimal effort, we could address that to make it where, if things were shut down, we could make that in a safe manner for the interim. If we move into phase two of this project, this really has three major phases, we will be impacting almost every tenant and blocking off major taxiways and access, and that is scheduled maybe to occur here in a month and a half or so from now, where we could get into point where the airport will experience significant operational impacts. And Justin, do you want to add anything to that?
Basically, Curtis is exactly right. It would block off nearly, depending on how far the construction went through on the taxiway, could potentially block off, you know, between 40 and 70% of the aircraft that are based at the airfield. And if there was a long delay at that period, that could mean months of a majority of aircraft unable to use the taxiway. We've tried to work it in a way with the engineers and with the current contractor through temporary means of being able to move the aircraft around, but there is potential that it could cause some holdover, and that's whether any construction crew is out there.
Does, is there anybody else here that would like to address this issue?
I believe the contractor is here.
Do you have anything to say?
Yes, I believe.
Will you come over?
Well, as he said, you know, bonding company is not a quick fix, and there's been a lot of circumstances that have taken place since the bid of this contract. It was delayed in award, and we, as a contractor, feel like we can complete it, and we can complete it in a timely manner. We don't agree with all the engineers' assessment, and I definitely don't agree with the fact that the next phase will actually stop anybody from operating their aircraft. They, matter of fact, you guys approved and awarded a change order so that that wouldn't impact when this work was done. What they haven't told you is that we have 34 days by contract of weather that we haven't been awarded. The contract time, they started a month before they looked at some middles. The smittle process is a lengthy process, so we have some time. 60% that they say, that we're saying that we're past on our schedule, we don't feel like there's that big a gap. Another part of the project is about 60 to 75% of the project is concrete alone, and 90% of the concrete can be placed in 30-day period, and we're about to that point. So we're a local contractor. We went from $7.5 million a year in 2011 to $600,000 last year because President Obama didn't pass a budget, so the contract awards were delayed. This project was several months late being awarded. Our circumstances changed when our bank failed, Farmers and Merchants Bank, which was a local bank here. The new owners selected not to renew our notes. We liquidated $5.5 million worth of equipment and $2 million of it in December alone, and we took off of this project. We do have sufficient manpower and equipment to finish this project. We currently employ about 20 employees right here on Division Street in Guthrie every day that live here, work here, spend their money here. My wife and I own this company. Calling our bonds would only, we have spent the last nine months in a situation that I wouldn't wish on my worst enemy. All circumstances beyond our control. We went from, like I said, a $7.5 million company to a $600,000 company in a matter of six months because of lack of award of projects that we won and the failure of a bank that we had nothing to do with. So there's not much I can say. Under the circumstances, we feel like we're lucky to get up and out of bed and come to work every day. Can we finish this project? Yes. Can we finish it in a timely manner? If the city wants to work with us, yes. If we're awarded the days we're due by contract, yes. If you want to call the bonding company, that's the city's prerogative, and that's a decision you guys have to make.
Any other comments from the council? Are all the other contractors tying ever bail, or are we all, the rest of the contractors all where they're supposed to be?
We have one other project on the airport. It's completely unrelated. It is a water and sewer project. It is, they have experienced some of the same weather delays, and other than that, it is on schedule. Yes?
I was just gonna ask the Total Investment Company guy, what does timely manner mean? If you can complete a job in a timely manner, what, can you give the putting?
Hang around a little bit. It's, and Curtis's concerns are legitimate concerns, that they would like to see more equipment or manpower on the job, but the way it's phased, there's not a lot, we called in, we called in some other contractors that were gonna come in and help us, but the way it's phased, there's not a lot of room. I mean, it's only 5,000 or 6,000 yards of dirt work. I don't know if you guys are familiar with earthwork or site work, but we put it in lifts, it's compacted, it's a slow process, there's not a lot of room for more people. The next process that we're going through, I mean, we're at the point of completion of the earthwork, so we're ready to put down the aggregate or the gravel, and then the next process is the cement, which will go down very rapidly. And then, you know, then the contract goes from 26% to 85% in a matter of weeks. You know, the part of their assessment is based on the dollar value of the contract versus the time. And again, we have, by contract, 34 weather days that we've not been awarded, and they started the contract time 20-something days before we actually had some middles that we had turned in in July that didn't get looked at until October, November. So maybe there's a little oversell see the, you know, airport board to get the project started.
I got a question for Justin. So, okay, can you tell, what's your side of the story when it comes to 34 weather days and then a late smittle of the contract? And tell us more on your...
The contract was awarded, or the, basically, permit to proceed for the contract was October 1. The engineers reported that the first date of actual work being done at the airport was 26 November. We had, they had three weeks, negotiated three weeks until the start date of when they would actually have equipment on the ground. As far as anything beyond that, I'm unaware and would have to basically refer to our engineers. They're the ones who are in the day-to-day of it, but the start date is, was supposed to be three weeks past October 1st. And then after that, the actually getting on the airfield for them mobilizing out was, and starting was November 26th. And then, what was your other question?
The lightness of the contract?
Oh, weather days. Weather days have all been, basically, the engineers evaluating the weather days. I have no doubt that Mr. Emin did turn in 34 weather days, and that's whether the engineer found them accurate.
The schedule that we've laid out for you, projecting, actually incorporated 21 of those weather days in that schedule along with our projection. Should additional weather days occur per contract, now if weather limits him from doing work, we don't penalize him, and he gets the weather day on the end. So whether he was within performance period or outside performance period, a weather day, as defined in the specification books, will be granted. So any, you know, if we get snow in July, he'll get a weather day and not penalized through liquidated damages for that.
And a weather day, and there's a lot of things that constitute a weather day in an FAA project. You can't place earthwork when the ground's frozen, so if you can't work at least half your crew half a day, it's not considered a workday. So when it's freezing at night, and it doesn't thaw out till noon, so it rains one day, it takes two days to dry out before you can actually work. So this, there's, just because we haven't had a lot of rain or a lot of snow, doesn't mean that we haven't had weather that affected the performance of the work.
So in your timeline, and you say a matter of weeks, when, if we did say, okay, go on with this, tell me what would be a date that you would say this is done? Well, how long would it take you to do this? From your opinion, how long would it take you to get this done?
Actually, if you don't mind, I would like to interject with this, and I just had a brief discussion with your attorney, and I think that could be something where, should the city council want to set forth a second performance plan, that a city manager, ourselves, Justin, and the contractor would sit down and develop a schedule for completion, knowing that it may go into liquidated damages or not, but establish that performance plan, get that date that you were just asking for, and then that would be something that our parties would agree to, and that would be the new measuring stick for performance. If, and that is...
I think that's a good...
Uh, I think that's a good, good idea as to where we are right now. And then if, and, and that plan has to be established and approved by all parties by next council meeting. And if not, this agenda item is back on the agenda next time. So that would hopefully give you the opportunity to get where you need to be and get the city comfortable that you'll do the.
And on a personal note, I mean, just from mine and my wife's perspective, like I said, the circumstances that were beyond our control that have brought us to this point in, in our company, we fought for the last nine months to stay out of bankruptcy, stay out of reorganization, stay out of personal, uh, losing our credit personally. And the way a bond works is we had to have the, the, the money or the property to back that bond. You call the bond, all the bonding company does is come down on us personally for the financial balance. So, uh, we're on the hook one way or the other. We're just asking for the opportunity to finish our contract.
Do we need a motion?
You're an Oklahoma contractor.
We're right here in Guthrie. We're on Division. We've been here for fifteen years.
Well, you, you seem to be very positive that you can get this job done. And I for one would like to see you complete it. I think you can.
Well, we'd like to have the opportunity to do that.
I'd suggest we make a motion to pass this item at the next city council meeting with the understanding that Curtis and the contractor and me and whoever else from the city needs to be involved will come up with a performance plan. And that is pretty much a drop dead plan. And if it is not met this time, then we will have no choice but to drop the hammer.
So move.
I was just gonna say something.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, cast your votes please. A yes vote would be to continue. Yes, ma'am. Show us how we felt.
No problem.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, guys. I know the, uh, airport board is wanting to see some progress out there. We're ready to, to grow and do some great things and so I hope this works. Okay? All right. Item four.
Number four is to, thank you, is to consider approval of amending section eight, assignment and subletting of the territorial square dance club lease agreement for use of the building commonly known as the Girl Scout cabin. As discussed in a, a workshop a couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation about a property that is currently being, uh, there are current residents in that facility, which would be a violation of the current contract. And I would entertain council to, to ask questions. We do have the territorial representative here with us tonight.
Maybe it's too early, but I, I would like to move Mr. Mayor to table this, um, issue. We've talked about it at the workshop. I think we can have the city manager and the representative for the territorial squares to come up with an agreement that seems fair, but increases the revenue of that property. Something that's fair for both parties.
I'm not sure from what I heard at the workshop that there's understanding of the contract. On either side. If there's no one in the, in the, in the house, then we don't charge them for the rent, right?
No, our current contract does not allow any other use under section eight.
I'm talking about the, the modification.
Uh, I, yes, sir. I am unclear on how council, it is currently in breach of contract. You can either choose to amend it, um, to allow it, you could set rules on it on how much, you could say it's in violation and null and void the contract. So, uh, my, my presentation to you is that it's, it's currently in violation.
I, I still feel like we should table it and there should be a negotiation and, and my only concern that if it's vacant, there's incentive to leave it vacant so you don't have, there's no reason to try to.
They have incentives to put someone in it to take care of the.
So I just wanna make sure there's an agreement between the two that, uh, a better agreement could be made instead of a hundred and fifty dollars a year type of thing, so.
Max, do, did we have, uh, uh, questions of vandalism before we realized that we did have someone in that facility? And they are keeping the facility to, to our specs? And, uh, are you perfectly satisfied? Yes, sir. Won't you come to the microphone, please?
Let's start dancing. He might start dancing.
Okay, my name's Andy Turner and I'm the caller for territorial squares. And, uh, we have the old Girl Scout cabin that we used as our dance hall. And since we have been in the, the building since nineteen ninety-two, we've had two break-ins. Both of those occurred whenever there was no one living in the apartment. So we would like to keep someone living in that apartment so the people don't break in. The last time was when the previous caller was there, he lost all of his equipment, all of his records. And it cost him about three thousand dollars to, to repurchase his equipment. So we, uh, I don't leave my equipment up there, I'm sorry. I don't have an extra three thousand dollars to go and buy new ones. But we would like to keep someone in there if at all possible. And we'd like to keep it at a minimum charge because it's not much of a little place.
No, it's not.
It's probably, we're looking at probably five hundred, six hundred square feet of living space and it's not much. But, uh, they have been real good tenants. They, uh, they take care of the place for me. They mow the yard, they weed eat the yard. Whenever something happens inside their apartment, they fix it at their cost, not ours and not the city's. So we would like to keep a caretaker in there if at all possible.
I understand. Is there any more comments?
I'd like to leave it the way it is. I think Andy's very happy with it and I'm happy that you're not having any break-ins. If it's worked since nineteen ninety-two, leave it alone. It's not broke. That's how I feel about it.
I, I, I will say as city manager, I, I take the direction of the council. I'm not clear, um, right now what I, uh, the council would like me to negotiate. So without having negotiation terms, um, would you like me, uh, I have council member Hazelwood that like me to not touch it. Councilmember Wood that would like me to negotiate it maybe for a fee. Do I hear a possibility of saying that, uh, we terminated? That I, I'm get, I'm feeling that that's not what we want to do. Is that correct?
I think it's okay to have somebody in there. My concern is we've had an issue with, uh, the house out on Liberty Lake. That an individual stayed out there and they were, uh, paid by the city and they were to upkeep the property. And, and they basically just band-aided anything that happened out there. And, you know, the city was, had no idea that they weren't really taking care of the property like they should. And so that would be my concern is, you know, what are they doing if something breaks? Are they actually gonna band-aid it? They're actually gonna fix it? Do they, are they capable of doing that? Are they, what is their expertise? You know, I mean, it is, it is the city's property, so the, in, in the long term or the end, it's gonna end up back to the city. Well, what kind of shape will it be in when we get it back or if we get, you know what I'm saying?
Sure. Would you like us to draft language that would talk about the upkeep, upkeep of the property? Maybe some items in there that, that say what we consider good repair?
I think it needs to be inspected.
Okay.
And I think that on that inspection, you write down everything that's wrong with it and, or everything that's right with it. And that in, in a year or whenever we renew the contract or whenever we decide to negotiate, that, that is referred to as, that everything needs to be the same.
Well, I was gonna, that's a good point. And I think if we're gonna do that, then if we're already recrafting this lease, it's already in violation, then obviously we'll need to change the language about assignment and subletting. And then part of that would come into if we're going to do that and we're expecting certain items to be repaired, that they're repairing that in lieu of the additional cost and fees. It makes sense.
That needs to be negotiated.
And they have been.
And then we change this to an annualized, an annualized lease as opposed to a multi-year lease. So we can deal with it per year as opposed to dealing with this until 2015 stuff.
Right.
So each year it goes through a review, maybe twi, two inspections a year.
That way you know the people in it are gonna take care of it because they have.
Right. Does that, does that make sense to you?
Yes, sir.
I don't wanna do-si-do around those.
Well, not.
Sorry. I've been, I've been waiting all night to say.
I think it's important that we are, that's, it's, I feel like a hundred and fifty dollars a year is giving away an asset. When insurance probably costs itself, the city pays for insurance at that place probably five to seven hundred dollars a year. So in fact, we're giving them that money. We should at least cover that money.
Yeah, and I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying also in lieu of that money, if they're doing things and can keep a tally of all the expenses and if we're checking it twice a year, Maxine runs over and says, well, this needs repaired, this needs repaired.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't saying anything.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just, in addition.
But at least it's a plan of action that we can move forward.
Just to give you an idea, in, uh, the latter part of two thousand and eleven, we had the complete Girl Scout cabin painted on the outside and all the loose boards fixed and everything cost us about twelve hundred dollars. So, yeah, we take care of the place and, and we want to continue taking care of it because it's a good place.
Is that a fair, I mean, is that some like a fair somewhat solution to, does that give you some direction?
I zoned out for, for just a second, but I will ask, so do we wanna leave it at a hundred and fifty dollars a year or are we looking at?
As I said, I think we need to cover, I mean, if, and if Trey, get, I hope I'm not taking you wrong, if we're gonna say deducting money for repairs and stuff, we should be charging something and then they deduct from that base whatever it is.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, we need to set that amount.
And then insurance as well, we have to pay for insurance out there. We can't be, you know, passing along.
But if they split twelve hundred dollars and they could say, hey, this is, you know, submit, hey, this is twelve hundred dollars.
Give us receipts and then say, hey, this is how much it costs.
But, but what John's asking for is what is that amount that we're, that we need, we're expecting?
Right.
And, and maybe that's something that you can help.
I think that needs to be negotiated.
That, that's what I'm asking, may you negotiate those numbers?
I think there may be some parts of this that, uh, need to be done in a small group.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, there's some things I don't think the whole world, uh, at this time needs to know. We may be helping somebody that has no other way to be helped and, and they may be helping.
That's basically what we do.
And I don't wanna get into that. I'm just saying, I would like for that to be handled at a conference table.
I will do my best.
Okay.
Promenade.
All right.
I'm just trying to go back to my memory, Max.
Do we, do we have a motion?
I move to table.
You move to table?
Yeah, so we'll consider it next time and in between now and then, hopefully we'll have some kind of agreement written up.
Okay. I hear a motion to the table.
Second.
Have a second. Cast your vote, please.
Hey, your votes are in?
Yes, ma'am. Show us how we felt. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. I, um, and who is that?
Good me.
It's you? Go head on.
What a great place. Um, I want to invite you all on March twenty-fifth at six o'clock to, um, bye Randall, we'll see you. Oh, okay. On, on March twenty-fifth to come to a candidate forum. We have eight individuals running for, uh, positions such as, uh, mayor and council members. It will be at six o'clock at the council, at council chambers. The Chamber of Commerce is hosting the event. Dan Newton will be the moderator. Uh, come with questions and, and enjoy that. Additionally, council member John Wood, myself, Cody Mosley, Officer Gibbs, and seven students are joining us to go to municipal day, um, on, on March twenty-something, twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth. We're going to, uh, going on the Capitol and it's, it's such a nice thing to see, uh, students interested and that they get a field trip is probably part of that. But, uh, students interested in, uh, local government and willing to, um, to, to serve that day and, and we're happy to show them, show them off. That's all I have. Mayor?
All right. Thank you. Councilman Hazelwood, she's thumbing through the phone book.
Well, I want to thank again all the people that came for the arts tonight. You guys turned out great and I think the citizens of Guthrie will be very proud of what we've tried to accomplish tonight. And on our next agenda, I hope we get a resolution on it. Cause I'm, I'm fired up and I'm ready to go and I hope these folks are here. Today was a sad day for me on one note because I had to go to the funeral of Ray, uh, the gentleman that was a, a very, very close friend of mine at St. Mary's Church. And Roy Ellison was his name. And he was a deacon at our church for a long, long time. But the thing is, he helped, he and his wife Suzie helped so many children here in Guthrie. They had an opportunity to do things that they never could have before. St. Mary's has a small school, but we have a lot of spirit over there. And it was because of, of Roy Ellison and Suzie Ellison, his wife. And you can't replace people like that very often in a small community like this. And to give him a grand send-off today was beautiful. But I hope other people in our community will step forward. And when you see children that need help, do it. There's been a lot of people before, Sarge Wiles, Art Sanders, the people of this mentality and capability that have helped children in our, in our town for years and years and years, were starting to die off. And it's time that you young people step forward and take the hand of a child and help us. St. Mary's Church is just one church here. There's a lot of churches in Guthrie. But you look at your, right in front of you, you see a child, you reach out and help that child. And believe me, on the other end of the Guthrie arts, we're gonna make this happen because we all care about the children in this community. And twenty-five years from now, when we're all dead and gone, look back and see what the people of Guthrie have accomplished working together. It's gonna be a beautiful thing and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Councilman, I would like to note that, uh, you speak for yourself. I intend to be here in twenty-five more years.
You go, boy. You go, boy.
It's wrote down right here. I'd like to check that.
I second that. I think at the same point.
I like that, Chuck. That's good.
All right. What about you? You wanna be around?
I do, indeed. Uh, I just, I'll take just a minute. Again, I want to express my thanks to, uh, Trooper Betsy Randolph for all the work that she does on behalf of the city. Uh, she's a great asset for us and I appreciate her. Other than that, spring break, watch out for the kids, they're running around. And, uh, I've got nothing else tonight. Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, I know, I'm a kinda quiet guy. Well, I didn't wanna do-si-do around these.
St. Mary's doesn't have anything that you wanna, you wanna work on?
I got shameless plugs coming later. It'll be.
Another one? Zee?
I have nothing to add to this.
You have nothing to say?
Nothing to add. I'll give my time to Mary. She wants it.
All right.
You know, I've always got something to talk about.
Yes, you do.
Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with NBC's Renovation Nation. It's a new show that they're, that they're working on. And the film commission contacted us this week and asked us if we knew of anybody who owned a home or an old building that they were currently renovating. Chuck, I'm gonna sign you up. And, uh, what it is, is there, there's like a competition on who does the best renovation, who's, you know, there's, uh, uh, you know, all sorts of deals in the projects. But anyway, if you've got any kind of renovation going on in your home and you're interested in being a part of this, will you contact me at the chamber office, two eight two nineteen forty-seven? And we'll put, we'll submit your name in with the film commission who's in turn gonna talk to NBC about, uh, some projects. So that's the biggie. This weekend, we have Byron Berlin doing a show, seven thirty on Saturday. Um, next week, the choir will be doing the Wizard of Oz Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday and Monday at seven thirty at Favor, um, the Old Favor School. And that's it. Have a good weekend. Don't forget to shop Guthrie.
There you go. I go, man.
All right. Talk to you then. On that note every time.
I know. That's right.
All right. Um, let's see, Serena already mentioned that, uh, I know I will be at the Oklahoma Municipal Day, uh, next Tuesday. And I think that's really important, uh, for us to go because it's a presence from, you know, citizens who represent cities to be there and let the legislators know that we're important and our issues are important. So that's, that's why we go to that. Um, also, it's a place to, for us to learn about their issues and what's going on at state level. And, uh, I, I feel passionately enough about it that I, every year, bring students, my my students at Rose State College to the Capitol, and I brought uh twenty-three students uh last Thursday to the Capitol to see it, and we toured it, and we were able to see uh the House and the Senate and all the art, and it was a lot of fun, so I do that every year. Um, also, we're gonna be, several of us are gonna be, uh, April third, the placemaking conference at OU, which is, uh, I think it's by the Institute for Quality Communities, and that, that's all about learning about communities and how to make communities better. And so, we're, we're kind of constantly learning about how to do things better. You know, this is a volunteer job and, you know, and, and it's about uh making Guthrie a better place, so that's what we're trying to do here. Um, and I'm glad that, you know, the last two agenda items, um, we were working together with folks in the community. So, I mean, we got uh basically Andy Turner of the Square Dancers, and we're working with them to make something that's negotiable, that's good for the city and for the Square Dancers, but also uh the Total Investment Company and working with them and saying, look, we wanna, we wanna see you guys succeed, but you guys not get a, keep up with certain criteria. And so I think, you know, we could have been, you know, tougher with them in some ways, but I think working with them makes sense and we'll keep them at a certain level of criteria. Um, also, I'm really glad to see a lot of businesses are coming to town, I don't know if you guys have noticed that. Uh, we have FedEx is actually coming to town, uh, it's gonna be open, I think, next week, so that's something great. Um, and so Billy Sims Barbecue, right, that's something, uh, that's good, it's coming to town. Boomerang Diner uh is coming to town, Prairie Gothic, so these are all new businesses coming to town, people are coming to Guthrie, and so I think there is a sense that our community is a quality community, it's a place to come to live because we have a good quality of life and, and it's gonna keep happening, so um, that's all I have.
All right, good job, good job. Well, uh, first thing, I would like to thank everybody for the prayers and uh support for me and a little bout of illness and uh, I'm coming back, I'm back! So, uh, kinda slowly but surely, but it's, it's getting better, but I want to thank this community and the churches and people have just come up to me on the streets and said, Chuck, uh, we heard you were sick and uh, our whole church prayed for you.
Everybody missed you.
That's cool, and that's what's cool about this community, so.
I caused quite a ruckus while you were gone.
I heard that. I heard that. And the bluebell won't be the same. No, it wasn't over there. That's a joke, don't take anything crazy out of here. I just uh want to thank this community for supporting me as well as they have over the last six years and uh, and caring, so uh, I do too about y'all, so. Okay, meeting adjourned.